So go ahead and get started. We will call the Johnston City Council Meeting number 20-16 to order. Cindy Rollcall.
Councilmember Cope? Councilmember Cope?
I'm here, I'm here, I just muted.
Evans?
Martin?
Here.
Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Here.
Okay, before we proceed, I will read the COVID-19 information statement due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with Governor Reynolds' March 19, 2020 proclamation suspending the regulatory provisions of Iwo Code, Section 21.8, or any other statute imposing a requirement to hold a public meeting or hearing. The City of Johnston will contact the meetings electronically with the public allowed to attend, per instructions denoted on the meeting's particular agenda. Meeting minutes will continue to be posted per the city's normal course of business. We'd like to welcome everyone that is with us this evening. Cindy, do we have members of the public that are with us?
We appear to have about eight people with us.
Okay, well, we do want to welcome you, and if at any point in time you would like to comment on an agenda item, you can raise your hand, and Cindy will acknowledge you, and we will invite you to make your comments at the appropriate time. So again, we're glad to have you with us this evening. The next item on the agenda is the agenda approval. Jim, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes this evening.
Okay, councilmembers, any changes?
None for me.
No.
Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move, Rash.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to public communications, we do not have any scheduled public communications this evening. However, if any of the members of the public that are with us this evening would like to make a comment on an item that is not on the agenda, this would be the time to do that. So if you do have some information to share or comments to share on an item that is not on the agenda, please, please raise your hand now.
We do have one.
Okay.
Oh, two now. Looks like Lillian Hill first.
Um, yeah, hello. I'm Lillian Hill, and I'm 12 years old, and I live in Johnston. And on August 3rd, I sent a letter to the council and the mayor about climate change and what Johnston is doing to prepare for climate change. And I'd like to talk a little more about that. I emailed my letter, is that possible if we could go through that right now real quick, or no?
Well, if you, if you want to summarize it for us, Lillian, we, you know, we only have about three minutes for you to present, so.
Okay, cool. Um, so basically, there's three main statement pieces that we've worked on to, yeah, get the ball rolling in Johnston as long as, you know. And the first one is having a city council member sit in on every meetings. I have a climate change committee on Facebook, and yeah, so that would be one of the meetings you could sit on, or doing a committee, creating another committee for Johnston. And then also joining the UN's CEEE, and that would basically just mean doing a carbon emissions study on either the commercial or governmental areas in Johnston. And then the last one, the last one is like recognizing a committee group. And so if there's any time where I can talk a little more deeply into it, I'd love to do that in the next future meetings.
Maybe, maybe what we need to do, Lillian, is have you get together with me and representative or two from the city council and the city staff, and talk about your ideas and see, see what we might be able to do with them. I have had some communication with you, as well as with Ginger Solberg, about the UNI study. And so I'm looking at the information that's been sent to me on that, and that's something that we can talk about when we, when we get together. But I think probably then, what I would suggest as a next step is just having a conversation between you and a couple of the councilmembers, me and some city staff, and see what, what the possibilities might be.
Okay, I think that's a good start, thank you.
You bet, thank you, thank you for being with us.
And we also have Virginia Solberg with us as well.
Hey, Ginger. Did you want to make any comments?
Now, am I unmuted?
You're unmuted now, now we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to support what Lillian had to say. I'm a part of the Climate Change Committee, and we're really excited that we have someone like Lillian, who kind of pushed us all to get going on this, because I think many of us have felt this is important, and we're glad to join her efforts. She mentioned the greenhouse gas emissions study, that's really important to start with, so you have a baseline. A number of cities in the area have started this, and that's the first thing they do, including like the city of Des Moines. And that's a free study out of the University of Northern Iowa. There, we found Lillian has come up with, and some other contributions, a list of at least 40 people who have already signed on to supporting this effort. So we know there's citizen support throughout the community. And I think you answered, what's the next step forward? We have the tape of Eric Gibbons doing, Giddens doing the presentation from UNI, other people besides you, and I'm not sure who else has seen that, but if other people would like to, councilmembers would like to see it, we can get that available to them. So any other information that you want from us, please let us know. And we thank Lillian for taking initiative, and we hope to get a lot of support behind us, we think this is really important.
Sure. Well, we appreciate Lillian bringing this issue to us as well. I mean, it's, it's wonderful to have somebody who's, who's at her age, has so much passion and energy around, you know, as a societal issue, so, environmental issues. So it's, it's exciting to hear, hear, hear her interest, and we'll, we'll get together with you and her and see what, what we might be able to do with the ideas.
Thank you.
You bet.
Mayor?
Yes.
This is Councilmember Cope. If you do put a committee together on that, to me, I would be, I would like to be a part of that, so just want to volunteer.
I am interested also, Mayor.
Okay. Well, we've got our two, two councilmen, councilmembers then. Got to make sure that we are compliant with our open meetings restrictions, so. Thank you. Is there anyone else that is with us this evening that would like to discuss something that is not otherwise on the agenda?
I see none.
Okay, now I've lost my agenda. I've got it. So the next item on the agenda is the public hearings. We have two public hearings this evening. The first is to conduct a public hearing on the matter of adoption of plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the construction of Windsor and 100th interim improvements, and consider resolution number 20-203, adopting plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost. Consider construction bids, consider resolution number 20-204, making award of contract, and resolution number 20-205, approving construction contract and bond. And we will open this public hearing at 7:14. Would this be Matt?
This would be mine.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. On August 5th, the city received bids for the Northwest 100th Street and Windsor Parkway intersection improvements. We did have three bidders on the project. The engineer's opinion of probable cost was $90,161.50. The low bid that came in that we received was $80,843.86. I'm sorry, $80,843.86. The certified bid tab that's attached to board docs shows that Inroads LLC was the low bidder. Staff and the engineer recommend approval of the project. This will be our first project with Inroads, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does council have any questions for Matt on this?
Matt, this is Councilmember Cope. So I think $80,000 might set a new record for smallest road project in the history of Johnston, so congratulations on that. So can you just walk us through what, what we're doing here? And is this, are we widening, a temporary widening? I know you sent us the plans, but frankly, that stuff's pretty dense for me. So. This can be kind of a two-minute explanation of what this project does.
So in the past few months, or since the interstate ramp has opened there on 100th Street, we've had some congestion at this intersection for folks trying to make a left-hand turn, either into the schools that are on Windsor Parkway, or into the neighborhood to the west. So what happens is, in those peak travel times, to get those left turners trying to make a movement into the school and having to cross traffic, traffic has picked up in this area considerably. Cindy, if you can open the plans, I would appreciate it. So what happens is, we start to stack traffic up at this intersection for folks that can't stack up or queue in a turn lane, which then backs traffic up. We've, when school first started last year or the year before, then we had traffic backed all the way up to 62nd Avenue. So this will help alleviate some of that if you keep going. So we're going to just, we're going to use the current lanes as turn lanes, and then we will go another page, I believe. So we'll, we'll put through lanes essentially on the outside of what's currently there for the traffic to get around those turn lanes, here we go. So this would be, west is up. So this would be essentially the, the lane that we would add, go in southbound there to the, on the right side of the page, and use that existing lane as a turn lane. This, this will get traffic to move through this intersection without backing up, without stopping. There may be some brief times where it does back up if, if the queue is longer than the turn lane, but this will improve the traffic flow through this intersection pretty well. And it is, it is a temporary solution until we have our CIP project, which improves this road to a four-lane road scheduled for 2023.
Perfect, that's helpful. I, I wasn't exactly sure where, when the permanent solution was coming, and so knowing that is helpful. And so basically, what, you're putting some asphalt down or something to create sort of that extra outside lane?
Yeah, we'll, we'll match the asphalt currently that's there. We'll put a temporary lane around the existing or off the shoulder. We do have with the new subdivision that went in in the, around 2008, 2010. We've got the right-of-way, so we don't need any additional right-of-way to put the lanes on. So we'll be able to do that. It's just tacking on an additional lane, which you see in the shaded area. I think, Cindy, if you scroll down the next page, it'll show the lanes essentially flopped coming back northbound. And maybe a couple more pages. Essentially, you'll see the same thing headed north, so those folks can get around through the area.
So you're, perfect, so that's, that's very helpful, thank you.
Does council have any other questions for Matt? If not, this is a public hearing. Do we have anybody with us this evening that would like to address this item? Not, we will close the public hearing then at 7:19. We have three resolutions to consider. First one, resolution number 20-203, we have a motion to approve.
Move approval, Cope? Second, Cope?
We have a motion and a second, Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution 20-204, we have a motion to approve.
I move, Rash.
Second, Cope?
We have a motion and a second, vote please.
Councilmember Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And we have resolution number 20-205, we have a motion to approve.
Move approval, Cope?
Second, Rash.
We have a motion and a second, Cindy, please.
Councilmember Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Did we get a yes from Soroka?
I see him visually nodding.
Yes. If I can add one, one, a couple of other pieces of information.
Well, second, motion passed.
Now you can add it.
Okay, sorry about that. One of the other things is substantial completion is scheduled for October, so we should have it constructed fairly quick. And then we'll have some follow-up next year when we do some seeding. But with that too, the construction shouldn't impact current traffic. It will be off to the side of the road, so we should still be able to get traffic through 100th Street. That's all I had.
Matt, I have a quick question for you.
Yes.
Item shows resolutions 203, 204, and 205, but the resolutions in the item are 204, 205, 206. I just need to know which numbers are your real numbers?
Well, let me open the document here. You said the document shows 203?
The staff report shows 203, 204, 205. The actual resolutions say 204, 205, 206.
I'm trying to get. It'll be, it'll be the actual resolutions number, so it would be 3, 2, 0, 4.
Or 5 and 6 instead of 3, 4, and 5?
Yes.
Actually, you know what, Matt, I think we're going to go 3, 4, and 5.
Yeah, I think it was the actual.
Yeah, we'll go 3, 4, and 5, so we don't need any changes. We're good, thank you. Sorry, sorry for the confusion.
Okay, well, we've gotten through that one, let's go on to another one. Public hearing 5B, conduct a public hearing on the proposed reallocation of unspent proceeds and consider resolution number 20-211, instituting proceedings to take additional action and approving the reallocation of certain unspent proceeds of the general obligation bond series 2017D and series 2018A of the City of Johnston, Iowa. And then we will open this public hearing at 7:23. My guess, this is probably Teresa's.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. The 2017D and the 2018A both included bond funds for our Northwest 70th Avenue reconstruction project. If you recall, that project was a three-phase project that turned into like a five-year deal, because we had utility issues, and then we had bidding issues. And somewhere along the line, we also had the city of Grimes repaying portions of that bond, or portions of that project, and we were able to qualify for some DOT money that came through the MPO. Long story short, that project is about done now, for sure, and we're waiting on one additional reimbursement from the DOT. And we have just a little bit of punch work, or I'm not sure if that's what you want to call it. Matt can speak to what's left, but about $100,000 left really of that project. And we have a lot of remaining bond funds. We knew this several months ago, which is why we were able to pare back the borrowing that we did in 2020, early in 2020 in the spring. And we were going to be able to use these bond funds for the Northwest 62nd Avenue and Merle Hay Road intersection project. So, long story short, there really isn't a clear legal picture on how you reallocate those funds. We know those are both street projects. We know those are both projects that were paid for by TIF funds and tax funds. But to make everything clear and transparent, our bond attorney, Eric Fuller, suggested we do this public hearing that just says we're reallocating those unspent bond proceeds, and that these are the projects we're doing this for, so that's what this hearing is about. Are there any questions?
Questions for Teresa?
Yeah, this is Rash. Where are you reallocating the funds to?
Did you say when?
Where?
Where, from the Northwest 70th Project to the Merle Hay Road Northwest 62nd Avenue intersection project? That was in the CIP.
Okay.
That's being constructed right now. And we knew it, so it's actually included in this budget. We don't even have to amend the budget. We knew we'd be transferring $6 million worth of bond funds, so we put it in the budget you approved last March. This is just the legal, clear step that we should do.
Any other questions for Teresa? Public hearing, do we have any members of the public that would like to address the council? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing then at 7:27. We have one resolution here, and that is resolution number 20-21. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move approval, Cope?
Second, Evans.
We have a motion and a second, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Martin.
Second, Cope?
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Soroka?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the non-consent agenda. Item 8A, consider approving the third reading and adopting and publishing ordinance number 1030, a text amendment to Chapter 174 floodplain management, an official zoning map amendment to establish new floodway, floodway fringe and general floodway overlay districts, easy case 20-08. This would be the third reading.
This is Dave Warding, no changes and no comments from previous readings.
We have a motion to approve, third and final reading, and to adopt and publish.
I move, Rash.
A motion?
Second, Evans.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 8B, consider approval of resolution number 20-198, a resolution except application for volatile volcanic basin territory into the City of Johnston for the establishment of zoning districts and referring the application to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their study and recommendations.
Good evening. This is typically an item that we'd have on consent agenda, but since it does consider, or it does include a non-consenting property in an annexation, we wanted to make sure the council was aware of that. And Cindy, if you could zoom out just a little bit, appreciate that. Back in 2006, the city annexed an area along Northwest 107th. At the time, there was a portion on the southern end of 107th on the west side that was on the Grimes side of the annexation agreement line that was not annexed at the time. And so this particular property and the right-of-way extending north along 107th up to 78th Avenue had to be left out of the annexation, so we didn't create an island in, on the Grimes side of the line. Fast forward 14 years, and now we have an annexation request on the Vogel property up on 78th Avenue. That property extends through the 107th Street right-of-way, and thus would close off that and would create an unincorporated island along 107th and the Kramer property down the south end. So state law does allow us to do an annexation that's considered an 80/20 annexation as long as not more than 20% of the property within the annexation is non-consenting to the property. In this case, that's 8%. And so it is considered a voluntary annexation, but we have to follow a different procedure. And so this, this action tonight would just accept the annexation application and refer the item to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it will come back before the council at a public hearing in a future date.
Any questions for David on this?
This is Councilman Cope. Dave, one of the things that's kind of confusing to me is when you talk about the Kramer property being on the Grimes side of the annexation line, but it's on the east side of Northwest 107th Street. And I've always thought that everything on the east side of Northwest 107th was in Johnston.
Right, right.
So this is just sort of a one-off, or?
Well, actually, the Kramer property's been on the Johnston side, but when the annexation was done along 107th back in 2006, the piece of property right across the street from Kramer, and then that area going south, was not annexed in Grimes at the time. So if we would have annexed all the way up, and the, and the property to the subdivision to the north, can't remember the name of there's, the Grimes subdivision there, that was in the city limits. So if we had annexed all of the property at that time, we would have created an, an island on the Grimes side of the line. And so we had to leave the Kramer property and the right-of-way out, so we didn't create that island. Couple of years later, Grimes came back and annexed that, and so that issue is no longer there, and that allows us to move forward with this particular annexation.
So everything on the east side of 107th is in Johnston?
Correct, and we'll make sure to get the Grimes boundary on the next map and make that so it's a little clearer to show how that happened.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for David?
I had one. On last time, I think we were checking to see if we could get ahold of the Kramers. Did we ever get ahold of them? And are they non-consenting because they don't want to do it? Or are they non-consenting because we didn't get ahold of them, so we don't have?
We've, we've made, we've made several outreach attempts and haven't received response back. And so since we don't have an application in hand, then we have to consider the property non-consenting as part of the annexation.
Okay, thank you.
And they were the property owners back in 2006, and so this, this is sort of one of those issues we knew would someday, this would happen, that we'd have to annex it. And so it's just, it's just been 14 years since that happened, so.
So David, when this goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission, what additional effort will be made to contact the Kramers?
Well, the annexations require certified notices, so those will go out for the planning, or for the city council meeting will be certified, and for the city development board, those will be certified as well. So they'll have, there'll be multiple notices that'll have to go out for that process.
Other questions for David? Again, this is just to refer the application to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 20-198?
I move, Cope. I second, Rash.
Have a motion and a second, vote please.
Councilmember Soroka?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin? Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to item 8C, your approval of Resolution Number 20-199, a resolution initiating a text amendment to Chapter 167 of the Johnson Zoning Code, Easy Case 20-14.
Good evening. This is an item that's somewhat related to the last item. Our current AR zoning district or agricultural reserve zoning district requires a minimum lot size of 30 acres. And the AR district is their automatic district that's applied to properties that are being annexed. And it's used generally in future growth areas and/or Corteva and Camp Dodge on a lot of land that have properties owned AR. But it's generally the district that gets applied to sort of prevent small subdivisions from happening. That would prevent future development. The Kramer, or excuse me, the Vogel property that's requested annexation currently has a horse stable on the front or the southern side of the property. They'd like to keep that and then sell the northern 20 or so acres off to a developer to develop a single-family residential. With the 30-acre minimum lot size, that's created an issue in getting that accomplished. And this is actually something we've talked about over the years of 30 acres really has been a problem. In fact, I know we rezoned one of the schools to a residential district at one time because it was being parceled off in something smaller than 30 acres. And so rather than get into creative rezonings, we just thought we could, with a small text amendment, amend the AR district to reduce the minimum lot size from 30 acres to 10 acres. Still preserves the intent that, you know, general development wouldn't happen in that zoning district. So it would preserve it for future development, but does give a little bit of flexibility for certain cases. And in the staff report, Clayton did some research, and it looks like we're kind of all over the board across the metro as far as minimum lot sizes in agricultural districts, everything from five acres to 30. So, but 30 being the most, so. Again, this is, this action tonight would just initiate this amendment, send it to the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration, and it would come back to the council as a public hearing.
Council, any questions for David?
Dave, Councilman Coke here. So do we have any lots in Johnston today that are between 10 and 30 acres in addition to this one? So by making this change, that would allow them to seek reclassification as agriculture reserve?
Well, we have a lot of AR zone properties that are less than 30 acres in size. And so by default, then they're non-conforming. This won't fix all of those situations. You know, we have a number of lots that are three to five acres that would still not meet the minimum lot size. But we, since we apply this district when we do annexations, it tends to be we have smaller parcels that come in and then automatically can't do anything on their property because they're not at that full 30 acres. So this gives a little bit more flexibility there.
But I guess my question was, I just want to make sure we don't have unintended consequences of by making this change, it's letting somebody who maybe has 12 acres and we have not up till now allowed them to do agriculture purposes, but now this would have let them.
Good clarification. So if there is owned agricultural reserve today, they can do the uses regardless of the size of their property. It's just they can't subdivide it. So this wouldn't change the use on any of those properties. It would just give some flexibility for those that are between 10 and 30 acres in size to parcel off or subdivide a portion of their property.
Okay, great. Thanks. Thanks. I appreciate you quite a find that for me.
Any other questions for David? If not, do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 20-199?
Move approval.
Second.
Second, Coke. Go ahead. You're good, Scott.
We have a motion in a second.
Councilmember Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Yes.
Motion passed. Next item, 8, Resolution Number 20-201, moving and authorizing execution number one to the Agreement for Private Development by and between the Johnston and LSJT Ohio LLC.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is Amendment Number One to the Roughwood Development Agreement. The Roughwood Development is directly south of the Price Chopper on 86. It consists of three proposed phases. Phase one is more or less complete at this point. It includes the Orange Theory Fitness, as well as the Dunkin' Donuts and the Nail Salon Retail Building. Phase two would include a mixed-use building directly to the south of this. And phase three would potentially include another retail building directly to the west of phase one. This agreement was previously passed by city council. It included a provision that would allow for a TIF grant to the developer for installation of some infrastructure that was put in place as part of this project, as well as the demolition costs incurred over each phase of this project, and then a rebate for phase one specific to the developer achieving at least one full-service sit-down restaurant, high-quality retail, and if economically feasible, rooftop patio. What was intended to occur as part of the development agreement was to council make this determination on the aforementioned items there probably later this year. Because of the COVID environment, the developers had challenges in attracting restaurants and filling those tenant bays. And so this amendment primarily switches the order of payment for the rebates from first paying out those associated with high-quality retail and restaurant to paying out rebates for the infrastructure and the demolition costs. It does not change the total amount of anticipated grants as part of the project. This will simply give the developer another year or two for them to fill those bays and to attract that restaurant and the high-quality retail, and then for council to come back and make a determination on whether he qualifies for that portion of the rebate. It also does establish the base values for each of the parcels now that that's been parceled off, so we know exactly what increment we'll be working with. One additional item, and Cindy, if you could perhaps pull up Amendment Number One red line updated as of 8/17. It was caught earlier today that in the schedule of grants for this, we had switched over those demolition grants and the infrastructure grants from a different part of the agreement to the specific part of parcel A. And in doing so, we needed to add in two additional potential years for rebate. So you see a slight red line in this agreement that expands that rebate horizon for this parcel A component from five years to seven years. So this has been in front of the Economic Dalton Committee. Without this proposed revision, it was supported. But I think the intent was that there would be seven years where the rebate contingent began upon the developer attracting that high-quality retail and the restaurants. So we'd asked that the council consider this with the red line language here this evening.
Any questions for Adam? Not, do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 20-201?
So moved Scott.
Second, Coke.
Have a motion in a second. Vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep.
Soroka?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Vote was four to one, motion passed. Moving on to item 8E, litter Resolution 20-206, authorizing execution of a letter agreement with Metro Fiber Net LLC, causing the mayor to sign the agreement.
This would be Adam again. Previously, Kathy with MetroNet centered on their intentions to construct high-speed fiber systems throughout the City of Johnston. Since that time, staff has been working with MetroNet on this letter agreement. They've incorporated substantially all the requested changes that we have made. And in fact, during that interim, City of Urbandale did pass this letter. They had most of the changes that we had requested in their past agreements. So what you're seeing before you is primarily a mirror of the Urbandale signed agreements with some additional language on restoration and a change under the permitting section that abides by the City of Johnston's intent to permit the project. So this instance, they're anticipating coming forth with areas of approximately 500 residents with the infrastructure plan and installation plan that would be reviewed by Public Works if they permit and approved. So they've substantially built out their system, which is anticipated to be approximately a nine-month process occurring in 2021. The agreement does allow them up to two years on mission rules of this letter agreement for that build-out to occur. Their intentions are to provide both telephone, cable TV services, internet services, those internet speeds up to one gigabyte, downloaded speeds. And the fiber would be installed underground in areas in which electric is underground and above ground in areas in which electrical is above ground in instances where electric might move underground in the future. MetroNet would be following suit on that. And it does require the city then to kind of work with MetroNet on the right-of-way process as outlined in this agreement. So there are instances in which there may need to be an additional pole put in place because the existing pole does not have sufficient room to put fiber line on that. This does allow for some sort of discussion back and forth with the city to confirm that the placement of that new pole is appropriate and that the number of new poles coming in isn't unnecessarily high. We don't believe that there's going to be a lot of instances in which there's going to be a lot of poles coming in, but that was one concern on the staff's side that was worked through on this. And then we've also established the restoration process and the relocate procedures in a way that's satisfactory to the Johnston Public Works Department to ensure that any city projects are not set back due to the need to relocate any MetroNet fiber. And that as MetroNet goes through their installation process, restoration of the property takes place timely. And then they've also outlined in here as well as their notification processes, which are fairly extensive for residents within each of those 500 permitting areas to ensure that everybody's aware that MetroNet's going to be doing work there and provide contact information for any residents that have questions or concerns. So the staff satisfied with what's in this letter agreements by Matt or Jim to have any additional comments. I know there's been some discussion with other communities as well that have worked with MetroNet or are in the process of getting ready to work with MetroNet as well. But the staff recommendation is to approve the letter as drafted.
Just another, just one other comment, Adam. So MetroNet has also approached Clive and approached Grimes. And so they are also considering a similar agreement. As Adam mentioned, Urbandale's already signed the agreement. So we would be the, if we approve it, we'd be the second of the four communities. And I think the other communities are seriously looking at us. There may be a build-out sort of this whole northwest area if all the communities do agree to work with MetroNet on this project.
Which raises a question for me. If they're talking to several communities, how does this impact the timeline for them getting fiber in the ground for us?
I believe Kathy is on the line, but the last discussion I had with her was the timeframe was still anticipated to be 2021. So Kathy, maybe you can weigh in if there's any other different answer to that. And Cindy, you may need to unmute Kathy. She is the eight one.
Yes, hello, Mayor. Members of council, Adam and city staff, yes, Kathy Scheller. We are going to stand, Mayor, to your question, on our timeline for Johnston and the construction process.
Thank you. Any other questions for Adam or for Kathy?
This is Councilman Coke. So have we had any conversations with MetroNet specifically about neighborhoods that we've identified are small pockets in the community that we know today do not have access to any broadband service to see if they can prioritize those areas?
I can provide you my input. We're intending to receive a map from MetroNet of the areas in which they'll build out towards the end of this year, perhaps around January 1st. We haven't discussed prioritization of that, but that's probably an excellent point. And maybe that's something we can discuss going forward, Kathy.
Yes, thank you, Adam and Councilman Coke. So what we will do is design the entire city prior to coming in. We are very transparent. We'll talk to the city about areas that perhaps you want designed and constructed first. We come in through a feeder, so we're really due diligent in the way we design the city so that we can come in nearest to where we bring that line in. But we will work with the city and talk with the city about all areas and neighborhoods that we intend to build.
Great. As long as, I mean, that sounds good. I mean, I think some coordination on that makes a lot of sense. And there's not, I don't know that there's a lot of areas that currently have no options, but I know of at least one small neighborhood over near on the east side of town that I think doesn't have any service today. And so, but we can, we can obviously, if we communicate back and forth, that's positive. So good to know.
Thank you.
Just so I can understand this, so that means we'll have three people who can provide this service, meaning CenturyLink, MediaCom, and then MetroNet? Do I got that right?
Again, good question. There are areas in Johnston that are served with fiber by CenturyLink and by MediaCom, but there's also large areas in which only DSL service is available by one or two of those providers.
And by doing this, are we limiting any competition from anybody else that might want to come in in the future?
MetroNet's being treated more or less in the same way that any other fiber provider would be provided as far as access to the right-of-way or access to being able to hang on existing power poles. There is limited amount of space on those power poles in some instances. And obviously, the more providers that are hanging from there may limit their options to hang from existing power poles. But there's nothing in here that would eliminate the possibility of additional service providers to come in.
And then does MetroNet lease out their line to other providers? Or is it MetroNet only?
Councilmember, no, we manage and have our own fiber line. We do not lease our fiber to anybody else.
Okay.
Other questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 20-202? So moved.
Second, Coke.
We have a motion in a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember ready?
No.
Soroka?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
The vote was three to two, motion passed.
And just, that was 20-206.
I'm sorry, I slipped back up into the non-consent, or into the consent agenda, sorry. Moving on to item 8F, consider the following items related to Newcom Estates, Plat 1, located at 6085 Northwest 54th Court, Lot 10 Kinsey Place. Resolution 20-208, authorizing removal of special assessment against property. Authorizing removal of special assessment against property bearing parcel ID number 241-00795-000-000. Resolution 20 dash 209, accepting a petition and waiver for improvements to Northwest 54th Court. Resolution 20 dash 210, approving the preliminary plat and final plat for Newcom Estates Plat 1. And who is going to take this one?
That would be me. And I hopefully unmuted myself. The owner of property is 6085 Northwest 54th Court, has submitted a minor subdivision plat dividing 1.91 acres into three lots. And as you can see on that vicinity map there, it's kitty corner from Lawson Elementary. Cindy, if you would, can you open up my plat maps? And that existing home on the property was constructed in 1950, of course, prior to incorporation of the city of Johnston. And that home will remain on the property while two new lots will be platted behind it for new homes. This type of subdivision is typical in this older part of town, East of Merle Hay Road, where deep acreages like this are common. And the existing lot. The existing home on Lot 1, it has a driveway access off of Northwest 54th Court that they will retain. And that existing home will use. Lots 2 and 3 will share a separate private drive. And the depicted entrance spacing between that private drive and the existing drive is 37 feet. That doesn't meet our code requirement, our code requires 60 feet. The applicant has requested the city council accept the access spacing as shown on the plat. And the code and comprehensive plan both do allow for some variation of code requirements for subdivisions of this type in the East of Merle Hay Road neighborhoods. Provided any exception doesn't create a risk to the public or the surrounding area. Of course, being a local street with a 25 mile per hour speed limit, approving that entrance separation as shown would seem to be in the spirit of those allowances. Given by the code and the, and the comprehensive plan. So staff would recommend approval of the access spacing as, as depicted. Another proposed variation from our code requirements relates to the control of stormwater. Our ordinances require larger storm events be retained and released slowly to the city storm sewer system. As designed, the proposed basins for this plat will not release to the city storm sewer system, but instead will retain. And infiltrate a 100 year storm event with no outlet or connection to the public storm sewer. Resolution 2210, that's included with my staff report, approves the plat with no outlet pipe for those stormwater basins. However, we are recommending all work for a future connection be completed in the right of way at this time. In the event those basins don't infiltrate the stormwater as they're designed, or if they stop working correctly in the future. When in such an event, we can require that basin be connected to the public storm sewer as needed without having to cut into the right of way. Also on the utilities note, this property is located in the Eastern Merle Hay Road Sanitary Sewer Service Connection District. And the applicant has already paid all those applicable district connection fees. In addition to resolution 2210, that approves the preliminary and final plats, I'm asking you to approve resolutions 2208 and 2209. 208 relates to a preliminary assessment on the property for East of Merle Hay Road infrastructure improvements. The county treasurer will not issue a tax certificate, which is a necessary plating document while there's a preliminary assessment on the property. And at the same time, the infrastructure improvement, improvements have not been finalized and accepted at this point in time. Which prohibits finalizing that assessment. So on the advice of attorneys to staff, resolution 2208 authorizes removal of that preliminary assessment. To facilitate issuance of that tax certificate. While 2209 accepts a petition and waiver signed by the applicant agreeing to be assessed for the final cost of those improvements. Essentially, that's a long way of saying it's a paperwork technicality that's required by the treasurer's office. To go ahead and issue that tax certificate. And also, we want to keep those assurances in place that we're going to be able to collect that assessment. Aside from the storm sewer issue, this plat's relatively straightforward. It's typical of properties in this area of town. I do believe the applicants, design engineer and the applicant have joined the Zoom meeting tonight and would like to speak on the storm sewer issue. If you have any questions for me, I can answer those now.
Aaron, I do have a question, regardless of whether there's two addition, whether this ends up being a plat for three, three properties or two. The driveway issue would be the same, is that correct? The, the, the non-conforming?
Yeah, as you can see that cursor there is, there's the private drive access on the south end of the property. It's kind of hard to see those lot lines, but that private drive serves lots 2 and 3. And. Yet, it's, I mean, it's possible you could require all three lots to use that, to use one driveway and. It's the applicant's request to have separate drives. In this instance, while it doesn't meet the code requirements, like I said, there's a little bit of leeway in the code that allows you to. Waive some of these plating requirements for properties when it's still in spirit of the ordinance. Both didn't have a firm stance on the issue, they simply pointed out that it doesn't meet the code requirement and they would need to seek a council, council waiver on the separation.
And explain to me what it would look like if it had to meet current standards? How, how would it be different from what is shown here?
I think a person could come in on that private drive and then make an immediate 90 degree turn to access that existing garage. And then you would eliminate that existing driveway. Or you could use the existing driveway and do an S turn off of that. To access lots 2 and 3.
And what, what it says now in the code, the two driveways are too close together, is that correct?
Yes, there's a 60 foot spacing requirement and these are approximately 37 feet. So you're looking at a difference of 20, 23 feet. Between what's required by code and what they're showing there.
Okay, thank you.
I had two questions. One was regarding, I think it was like a couple of months back, we got that email from a constituent, Ashley Brown in the Wilkie Place neighborhood. And they basically said they had bought property and didn't know that there was no internet connection. So one, just generally curious, like, I know we talked, we were going to have that be reviewed and look at potentially a policy change. Curious on that, and as part of that. Is internet infrastructure going to be part of this? Like, is this area already hooked up? Or if not, what is the plan there?
Yeah, and we, and we typically don't require internet or phone for, for any subdivision. That's, it's up to those utility providers to, to bring those services to those neighborhoods. I, I think in the past, they, they readily did that. And now it's more of a, an issue of whether it's cost effective to bring a service into a neighborhood. You know, how many, how many lots are being created and is it cost effective for them to bring that utility to the neighborhood? I can't speak to what services are available in this neighborhood, but what we require is, is obviously gas, electric and, and. Water sewer. So those are the utilities require, you know, it is larger conversation because at this point in time, internet is really becoming an essential utility. So you know, how are we going to treat that in the future? And, and that's certainly part of a larger conversation.
Okay, thank you. Maybe then to the applicant, I don't know if they know if this property currently has internet options like MediaCom or CenturyLink?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, my name's Benjamin Nuka, my wife and my family, we actually currently renovated the house. It's a house that's across from Lawson, it's been abandoned for about 10 years. And so we're living in there right now, we got it all fixed up. And it does have MediaCom internet access on the street there, which we currently have.
Great, and then, do you know, I suppose maybe you don't know, but like for any new lots, would they also have that MediaCom connection?
I've tried to have some conversations and it sounds like they're, they're open to and like most likely it shouldn't be a problem running it. Running service back there to, to those two lots. There is also one other service, service provider that's available, I can't remember the other carrier that it was.
Councilman Soroka, this is Matt. We did move CenturyLink or CenturyLink and MediaCom are both in the area. Well, when we did the project on 54th, they did have to relocate, they are aerial.
Thank you.
Other questions? If not, we have three resolutions for this item. We have resolution number 20 dash 208, do we have a motion to approve? Before, Mayor, before we proceed, I have a question about the options for voting. I, I have a relative that lives very close to this property and I don't believe that I feel comfortable in voting on it. Can I abstain from voting, Tim?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like, like to make a comment if this is the appropriate time.
Sure.
So just as far as the storm drain requirements, there's been a lot of confusion. And with our engineer Vic, we feel that we're meeting the requirements. And we're not quite sure exactly. Why we're being required to put something, put something in in case of what if happens, whereas we're meeting the 100 year requirements. A conversation that I had with Blair at Foth said that if we weren't cutting into the street, their recommendation would be to not even make the connection. So it makes me wonder how important it actually is putting this in. And so basically if we had decided and were able to put in septic, their recommendation would be to not make the connection, which is very confusing.
Well, admittedly now I'm kind of confused too. So my understanding was the recommendation we have before us is that. Basically, the infrastructure would be the outlet or whatever would be there. So that if it didn't work as planned or intended, that then it could be installed later. But is the applicant now asking for that hook to the property area not be included? Or I'm just trying to understand what we're being asked to decide on now.
Yes, we're, we're asking that we would not have to include that because we feel that we're currently meeting the code requirements. With the detention ponds.
This is Councilman Cope, Mr. Nuka, you, I just want to make sure, you, you're, when you, in your comment, you talked about. You mentioned septic, which is not stormwater, that's, that's sanitary.
Right.
So, so, so is your question about the septic or is your question about the stormwater?
My question's about the stormwater, I was making example when I spoke to one of the members at Foth who's been working on the project. Their recommendation of putting in the stub out for the storm drain is solely because we're cutting into the concrete. And she said if we weren't cutting into the concrete, then her recommendation would be to not put a stub out in.
But you, you are cutting into the concrete, correct?
Yes, but right now we'll only be cutting through maybe a third or half of the street because that's the side the sanitary sewer is on. But as if we have to make a connection to stormwater, then we would be cutting all the way across the street. And it'll probably impact all the construction traffic because that's the only direction that the traffic's coming through with all the work through the Lawson School there.
Okay, I, I want to make a clarification and I'm hoping maybe we either have Blair or Patrick on, on the Zoom meeting tonight so they can clarify their comments. But my understanding is it's not solely for the purpose of not cutting into the concrete in the future, but. Rather, the intention of having the outlet in place or a stub for an outlet. Is because if this basin fails and they can and do sometimes, this, this basin is designed solely to infiltrate into the ground. And if it silts in in the future, which, which does happen or gets compacted as a result of construction and doesn't function as designed. And that water doesn't go into the ground, we need somewhere for it to go. And that somewhere would be into the, the city's storm sewer system. And so we want to have that stub there in place in the event that it does fail in the future. So, you know, that's, that's kind of. The intention of, of our recommendation. If anybody from Foth is here, if you have any clarification, land it would be.
There's no one from Foth, Aaron.
Aaron, this is Matt, I've had some conversation with Foth on this. I think what you explained was exactly correct, they are. This street up, which the sanitary sewer and the storm sewer does both fall under with the constraints that we had during the construction. Was if this does fail in the future, instead of having to open the road a second time on a fairly new, a new street. That they would stub that so that it could be out from underneath the street and they could make a connection to it at a future time. And I think Foth has indicated that they've had experience where these basins, as you had said, or indicated, that they do silting over time and the infiltration. Isn't quite there after, after a few years.
Yeah. Go ahead, Aaron.
I was just going to say, so when, when the sole means of, of control that we're looking for here is infiltration. And there's a possibility that infiltration could fail, we're looking for a safety backup and a way to get this water out of there without causing issues to this property or the surrounding properties in the future.
Right, we, we definitely understand that and want to, want to meet code. But if this is something that the city thinks isn't acceptable, then I believe that the city ordinances should be changed to make it a requirement. Because we're, we've put in what they requested and now, and now it's changing. They're saying it's a what if, it could fail. And we're also willing to put into the HOA wording to put the stub out in at a later time if it comes to that point.
Benjamin, what I'm hearing staff tell us is this, that this, the, the stubbing out is a recommendation of Foth based on their experience with these kinds of. Proposals. So, you know, I'm, what I'm sitting here thinking is if, you know, if the question is what, you know, what is Foth really recommending here? And what should we be considering? Then maybe we need to defer this item until we can have Foth as part of the discussion.
I'd support that.
We've been having a lot of difficulties with Foth taking long turnaround times. I'd rather that we're able to move forward on it to tonight.
As they have recommended?
Ms, Ms. Mayor, my name is Dave Scruby, I'd like to speak to the issue.
Okay.
Benjamin is my son-in-law and our plan, the two houses, you know, we, we did remodel the front house, which Ben and Hannah are living in now. And we're looking to build those two new houses in the back. We moved here from California, of which I'm a, I'm a property developer. Not that that means much here. It's just that Ben's point and our point in general is that the detention ponds meet the code requirement. And the stub out is not a code requirement. That's the issue. It's a what if situation and has been said earlier. We understand what they're saying, but the code says detention pond. It doesn't say detention pond with a backup.
I'm, I'm going to stop there and say that for clarification, chapter 180.37. Does require stormwater to be conveyed through the site. It doesn't simply say retain and. It doesn't simply say retain and infiltrate on the site, but it's required to be conveyed through the site. And also section 180.42 subsection A requires all storm drainage flowing through the site and from within the site should be conveyed through storm drains and pertinent facilities. So so those two sections there do mandate that a connection be made or that storm storm water be allowed to convey through the site and also that it be conveyed through storm sewer pipes. So that those can be found in section 180.37 of the code and 180.42 subsection eight. So so what you're asking us to do is to is to kind of waive that requirement and just infiltrate 100% of the water volume. And Foth saying they're fine with infiltrating 100% of the water volume. But if we're going to waive that conveyance requirement, we need to at least have some kind of a backup plan in the event this fails in the future.
And and gentlemen, one of the things that we need to be very concerned about, and you know, we've had a lot of experience with storm water in our community. We have to deal with, you know, water issues all the time, you know, on properties and in neighborhoods. And and so because we because this has been an ever-present issue for us, you know, we we you know, we're very concerned about how storm water on one property will impact neighboring properties. Because we hear from we hear from them, believe me, we hear from them when when something does go wrong. So we we, you know, we're going to be very sensitive to how this might impact the neighboring properties around there. Again, I would suggest that if you know, if this is something that we need to have further discussion on Foth as part of that discussion, then maybe we need to defer it. Otherwise, you know, we could we could move forward tonight, accept the recommendation of Foth and 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 vote on it.
Mayor, this is Jim Sanders. May I make a or ask a question? So, Aaron, the way that I understand this, what we're proposing or what's recommended by the engineers, if they're stubbing the storm water or storm sewer pipe across the road to the property line. So if and and so that that could be a future connection for storm sewer. The savings that the property owner has today is that if if the they weren't infiltrating all that, they would have to run storm sewer into the property two lots, two and three. So in essence, they are saving significant amount of storm water costs because they're not having to run that. But but they the request is to have them just stub it to the property line today or now as they do the construction. Am I understanding that correctly?
I believe you are.
So I guess my point is is that the the there is some savings to the developer because they don't have to run the storm water two lots, two and three storm sewer into lots, two or three. The request is just to have them stub it to the property line. So it's available in the event that there would have to be a connection to to storm sewer in the future. That I just wanted to make sure that was cleared cleared everybody in the conversation.
Yeah, this is Councilman Coop. I would just, I think, to echo what what Jim is saying, the the way this resolution is worded. So paragraph five of resolution 20 dash 210, it is a that is that's a compromise, a middle ground approach by the city by just requiring them to stub it to the property line and not require them to build it all the way back to lots two and three. So the way these resolutions are drafted are are show a reasonableness on the city's part. Now, if as as the as the mayor suggested, if the if the developer still wants to continue to discuss this further with with Foth and and us and sit down and and defer it. They that certainly their right to request that. But I do, I I believe that the way that the resolutions are currently drafted shows a pretty high level of reasonableness on the city's parts already. And I'm not sure we need to take any additional steps to 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 water down what we've already got in these resolutions.
Yeah, I guess, given the comments, we'd be willing to just have this voted on to tonight.
Appreciate that, Benjamin.
Can I can I ask, what if the detention basins fail? Who who incurs the cost of Ben hooking into the storm drain?
Well, that's when it's supplied to the property line, which that would be the part that would be in the public right of way. Then it is the private property owner's responsibility to make any connection on the private property. So if if lots two and three end up flooding or something like that, it'd be their responsibility to get the storm water from those lots to the stub that would be provided in the street.
And I did word that condition on the resolution such that it says that that connection would be made at the owner's expense in the future, should it be needed. Just so that was clear going into.
Thank you.
Wanted to make one last comment on the road. There was the possibility of potentially having the road almost 60 feet apart. But it would have required us to cut down up to 10 very large mature trees. And that was one of the big reasons why we're asking for a narrower distance between those two roads.
This is Councilman Coop. I guess that's, you know, I I think are showing some flexibility on the 60 feet also shows another sort of attempt to to find some good common ground, middle ground, what's what the developer's proposing. And I I, you know, this is not a street like Merle Hay Road where you where you have to really limit or be very cautious about how many time, how many outlets to a street you have. I I feel like we can allow the two outlets here closer to the 60 feet requirement and be okay with that.
Any other comments? Questions? Bring on. We have a motion to approve resolution 20 dash 208.
So moved Evans.
Second, Coop.
We have a motion in the second. Cindy vote, please.
Councilmember Coop.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Abstain.
Freddie.
Yep.
Soroka.
Yes.
Motion passed. Have a motion to approve resolution number 20 dash 09.
So moved.
So moved. Second, Coop.
You have a motion in the second. Cindy vote, please.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Abstain.
Freddie.
Yep.
Soroka.
Yes.
Coop.
Yes.
Motion passed. And do we have a motion to approve resolution number 20 dash 210?
Move approval, Coop.
Second, Evans.
We have a motion in the second. Cindy vote, please.
Councilmember Martin.
Abstain.
Freddie.
Yep.
Soroka.
Yes.
Coop.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Motion passed. Want to thank you gentlemen for joining us this evening. Good discussion.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Item under the non-consent is item 8G, consider approval of claims in the amount of $1,708,470.97. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second, Coop.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion?
The law.
I've seen bigger, but you're absolutely right. It's a lot. Cindy vote, please.
Councilmember Ready.
Yep.
Soroka.
Yes.
Coop.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes. Motion passed. Moving on to city administrator staff comments. Jim?
Yes, thank you. I've got a couple of item I wanted to discuss this evening. First of all, our next city council meeting is on September 7th, which is one of those times where we have three weeks between council meetings. But we were at the point where we need to decide how we want to conduct our council meetings in September. Our meetings are September 7th and the 21st. And wanted to just have a conversation with the council as to.
Hey, Jim, Jim, sorry to interrupt, but September 7th is Labor Day. So do you mean September 8th?
Yeah, thank you very much. Yes, it normally would be the 7th. It is on the 8th and then yeah, the 8th and the 21st because the 7th is is Labor Day. So yes, so it would be on the 8th and the 21st. And again, just want to see if we're going to continue with our virtual meetings or whether we're going to move towards having in-person meetings again.
I I would to continue online. I don't think we are right at the point where COVID has disappeared or anything yet. And since we had several cases in the city hall itself, not very comfortable bringing person to person yet.
I I I understand what Councilman Soroka is, or not Soroka, Ready, Councilman Ready, sorry about that, is saying. I I would say that I I think we're probably the the position we are currently in, we're going to be in for several months. And so does that mean we will continue to meet virtually online until this and including once the new city hall opens? You know, I I I think we need to have a strategy that figures out how to how to address this. As somebody who spent the entire weekend at a softball field with hundreds of people, now granted, that was outdoors. But mixing and intermingling with folks, it's that's a sort of part of life. And so I I understand your hesitation, but I think we have to acknowledge at this point, until there is a vaccine that is readily available and and people can use, we're going to be in this in this. We're going to have the number of cases in Iowa is going to be, you know, out there. So I I think we need to be thinking about starting to move to a strategy that allows us to take advantage of the benefits of meeting in person and figuring out maybe maybe we need to have rotate if there's if folks don't feel comfortable, they can still participate by Zoom or some something. So I I think we just can't continue forever in this current mode. I know in my MAC discussions and others, other cities are moving to start to meet in person. And so I I think we need to think about that as well.
I thought we were holding off meeting together. We're in the new building.
I don't I don't think we made that decision. I think that there was at least some suggestion that we try and get back together again in the old city hall while we still had an old city hall. And then then move to the new city hall. Jim, Councilman Coop just mentioned that other communities, other cities are talking about in-person meetings again. Have you heard anything to that effect?
There happened to be some discussion among some cities today regarding where they are with city council meetings in particular. So for example, Waqee, they're going to continue having Zoom meetings for the foreseeable future. Don't really know what foreseeable future is, but Clive is is sort of the same way. Clive did come back and had a public meeting, I think in July, but then when when COVID continued, they they went back to their virtual meetings. So they're meeting via Zoom for the foreseeable future. Urbendale is still meeting through WebEx and they're having actually a work session tomorrow to discuss what their future will be. I will tell you that from what I understand, West Des Moines, they've had sort of a combined effort to have virtual meetings as well as in person. Where council members and mayor that are interested in in meeting in person, they do come to city hall. The other council members do participate virtually. What they've done is they've asked, requested masks, mask from any audience members, although it's not mandated. They set the chairs six feet apart so you could do social distancing. And then if there's a an issue which draws a larger crowd than what the city council room can support, they will ask the crowd to gather in a different part of city hall and then invite them in when their issue is there, when when maybe there's less people from other issues in in the city council chambers. So it appeared to me just in the conversations through email that I saw today, West Des Moines is is sort of doing a hybrid right now. Waqee, Clive and Urban Day are continuing with their virtual meetings, although Urbendale is going to discuss it tomorrow and see what they're going to do in the future.
Well, I tend to agree with Councilman Coop. You know, I think we need to be thinking about how we might get back together again in a person in-person meeting, particularly once we have the new city hall and we have some of the technology available to us that we'll have there. I don't think we'll be ready for that for the next meeting. I think we need to, we need to think it through and and have a strategy for how we do that. One of the advantages that some of the other communities have that we don't have, and that is that, you know, the the video capabilities that can be used during the time that that the city council members are or city council meeting is in person. So if we were to do kind of a hybrid, you know, in-person and Zoom, essentially what we'd have is a Zoom meeting, I think, with three person, three people or four people in the room at the same time. So that that doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me. So I think we need to think it through just a little bit and and you know, consider just what that in-person meeting would look like, understanding that not everybody's going to going to feel comfortable with an in-person meeting. That may be council members, that may be staff, that may be members of our public. You know, there's still going to be some interest, I think, in in having a having a Zoom element to the meetings, just because, you know, our our public just is there are there are different stages of comfort with with the situation that we're dealing with right now. And now not everybody's going to be comfortable with with an in-person meeting. So we got to, I think we need to think that through a little bit.
Well, how about if we do this? Again, we have three weeks between the now and the September 8th city council meeting. If staff talks through this, we'll have some further conversations, you know, with some of our colleagues and how they're managing that. And we can come up with a recommendation or plan or at least discussion item for the September 8th meeting. We can put that on the work session and get our plan going forward. You know, from after the September 8th meeting. And how does that sound?
Yeah, and I would encourage any council member who has some ideas, some thoughts, concerns, you know, share those, you know, directly with Jim so he can be taking those comments into consideration as well.
Can you include me in that, Jim?
Yeah, me too, Jim.
Yeah, just just submit your comments directly to Jim, all council members.
Okay, good. Well, thank you for have that discussion. Wanted to also thank our our staff again. We're doing this a little too often, I guess, from from the, you know, situations we've been dealing with this summer, but certainly a lot of effort on public works and parks related to the storm events. The actual cleanup technically or officially began today, but I know they worked really hard last week. The parks not only, you know, helping pick up some of the debris from our on this that residents are putting out, but a lot of damage in our parks again. And so I want to thank them for their efforts. We're, I know they're they're tired of of having to deal with these issues. This is the third time we've been in some form of cleanup this summer. And, you know, they that they're doing a fantastic job in getting that done. So I wanted to recognize them and certainly with the storm event. I mean, it it not only impacted the park and public works, it impacted all of our departments as, you know, public safety was involved as well and and because of the nature of the storm and the potential for, you know, injuries or other things that would happen related to traffic with, you know, traffic signals going down and all those other issues that you run into. But our all of our staff certainly have chipped in and and made the best out of a very difficult situation. So just wanted to recognize them and thank them for that.
Jim, this is Matt. I'm sorry. To add on to that, our drop off has been successful at Terror Park that we did open up last Wednesday through Friday. We had approximately 220 truck or trailer loads of debris delivered to Terror Park. We did close that to the public last Friday. We did close that to the public last Friday. We began our collection today. So we've got two heavy pieces of equipment out there loading six trucks. So we're running six trucks in and out of Tara Park. And we were just trying not to mix folks that would be in there dropping debris material off with, with our folks. So, but yes, as Jim stated, we did, we did kick off our curbside collection today. With the amount of debris that we do have out there, we probably expected to take a couple of weeks, just kind of comparing it to the last storm event that was a little bit more localized here on the east side. That one took eight days. This one may take two, two and a half weeks to get cleaned up. So just wanted to add that as well.
Thank you, Matt. Any storm-related comments from the mayor, city council at this point? I've got a couple of other things to talk about.
Oh, I'll just, just load on the, the compliments and, and thank yous. You know, I, it's, it's, it truly is, has been an incredible summer. Three major events in less than 10 weeks. You know, and, and we've had, we've had some neighborhoods that have been hit every time, which is just, you know, it's, it's got to be wearing on those residents. So the fact that our folks are out there, you know, assisting and helping them with the cleanup and, and doing the other things that, that are required when you experience something like this. First of all, you know, thanks, thanks to them, thanks to the entire team, thanks Matt and all of our department heads, because in, in one way or another, they're, they're all impacted when we experience something like this. And I know it's, it's very much appreciated by our residents. So kudos, kudos to all of you, hopefully. And I said this after the last one. Hopefully this is the last time we're going to have to do this. I, you know, I kiddingly tell people that we're getting real good here in Johnson at picking up sticks, you know? But we don't, we don't want to pick up any more sticks. So anyway, good, good job to, to all.
Okay, just a couple of other things real quickly. Just want to let the council know, I received about a dozen or so emails from some residents along Windsor Parkway related to the sidewalk or lack of sidewalk from 86th Street up the hill to 96th or 97th. There, there is sidewalk through some of the area that's been developed, but there's some gaps in that sidewalk as well. And I want to tell the, the council, the Public Works Committee is working on that issue. Actually, we've got folks that is looking at the, the design and cost of, of just filling that gap there along Windsor Parkway. Because there is, there are a couple of schools at the top of the hill as well. So we see that as a, a real priority. We don't have cost estimates at this point in time. And it is frankly, it's not budgeted either. So, but you know, once we get an idea of what that's going to cost, we'll be starting those conversations and trying to figure out if that is something that can be accomplished here in the near future or even if, if not added to our capital improvement program. So just want to let you know, I have received some requests and it's primarily from the Vintage Cooperative that is located along Windsor Parkway. And then I just wanted to also recognize some council members that have, I know you all put in a heck of a lot of time in, in your service to the community. A couple of items we just had within the last week. We had deputy fire chief interviews last Wednesday night that, that involved the mayor and council members and took about three hours of time. And I appreciate your all's willingness to take on those responsibilities to help us make important decisions for our community. And then this morning, we also had a group of council members involved with the broadband interviews. We, we've taken the RFP's request for proposals on doing this broadband study. And, and we had some council, a couple of council members, Chris Payton, those interviews today. And I think it was very fruitful process. And hopefully we'll get that narrowed down in the near future as far as what firm we're going to use to do the broadband study. And with that, that's all I had. Are there any other department heads that would like to talk about any issues at this point?
This is David, just one quick item. The Thrive virtual chat has been rescheduled for next Wednesday, August 26th from 5:30 to 6:30. And I'll give the invitation out tomorrow to everyone with that, with those details.
David, hearing from any members of the public about the confusion on that?
Just a couple. And both were more curious and had general questions, one of which I've already answered, but we have already communicated with them on the revised date, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
This is Chief McDaniel. If I can, prize the council of some general information for your situational awareness. For those that may or may not be aware, Governor Reynolds moved her press conferences to Johnston to the Iowa Public Television Building in July. As of last week, the Des Moines chapter of the Black Lives Matter movement has taken an interest in those press conferences. We had some interactions with their leadership this past Thursday and they've indicated to us that they will likely be present for the foreseeable future at these conferences. So given the, the nature of what can come from that, we'll, we'll make every effort to ensure the First Amendment freedoms are observed and also work to preserve the peace and safeguard the community and the Iowa Public Television structure as well. So there's a lot of, of planning going on internally, a lot of discussions. We've got some great partnerships across the metro and with the State Patrol and the governor's security detail. But just wanted you to be generally aware that we're going to be committing some additional resources to this for the foreseeable future with every intention of keeping it peaceful and ensuring that, that all have the ability to protest peacefully.
I think that's all this evening.
Hey Jim, if I could add one thing, just speaking of the storms, and I know my, my staff can't hear this, but, and I have already thanked them personally, but I did want to say something publicly thanking them for not only the cleanup, but my staff personally went out prior to the storm arrival on Monday and made sure everybody left Tara Lake, trying to get them out, seeing what the speed of the storm was and, and what the wind velocity was going to be. We didn't want anybody here when the storm actually arrived. So they personally took it upon themselves to go around the lake and, and make sure everybody understood the severity of the storm and got them out of here and got them to safety before, before anything hit. So I did want to publicly thank them for that.
John, did most people comply then pretty, pretty quickly?
We had a couple that argued for a little bit, but, but they did comply. And actually, one group of women that were arguing it, they were over at the shelter. And I think we've received now four, four of the group have either sent emails or personally given us calls to thank us that they just didn't understand the severity of the storm.
Very good. Thank you.
This is Matt. I do have one other update. The school transportation plan, when we met last time, the school board was, was looking at what they were going to do with their return to learn plan. On the school district, did adopt the hybrid plan. And they all, with that hybrid plan though, the district did keep their walk zones the same as they currently are. So you'll have one mile for elementary students and two mile for the junior high and high school students. So, so that did not change their transportation plan. With that hybrid plan, this will place approximately 15 to 16 riders on an elementary bus and approximately 25 or 26 riders on a high school buses, which is what was indicated at the, at the school board meeting. There were 100% busing for Lawson Elementary due to our construction project and the sidewalk connectivity until our project is complete. But what we plan to do is Public Works will monitor kind of that school traffic patterns the first couple of days of school to see what that parent drop-off looks like versus the busing. So there'll be more to report back on that in the future.
Thank you, Matt. Anything else from department heads? If not, let's go to city council members. Councilwoman Martin.
I, I, I just would, it was an astounding storm and also not having the library, not having the city council on, having lost power. I didn't realize that I had lost my internet, city internet until, you know, embarrassingly long time, I did not realize I wasn't getting any email. And so Cindy, I'm just going to give you a heads, heads up that I might need a little help. And I do think, again, thank the public crews and, and everybody for how quickly they cleaned up the neighborhoods of all the branches and thank you.
Councilman Soroka.
Yes, echo everything Councilwoman Martin said. And then also too, just wanted to give thanks to Jim Sanders, who helped with resident question about the gardeners of America property and answering their concerns. Also wanted to thank Matt Greiner, who helped with responding to some concerns about the Northwest 54th construction project going on. And then finally, just to thank you to Teresa for the online payment additional functionality that was added with the municipalpayments.com or whatever it is. Was really excited to see that and think a lot of people will enjoy it. So thanks for doing that.
Councilman Ready.
I echo everything Soroka said and thank you, everybody, for making, while the storm was really bad and appreciate all the help that everybody provided to make that a little bit better cleaning up and everything else. So thank you guys, appreciate that.
Councilman Cole.
First of all, I wasn't sure if Councilman Ready was at our meeting or if Carl Sagan had joined us for the meeting. Either way, we're always blessed with his deep knowledge. I just wanted to, Jim mentioned that we had this, we interviewed this morning the three firms on the broadband proposal and it was a really good discussion. A lot of staff participated. I think we certainly, I think, feel like at least two of the three are, are a good fit for the city. And I, you know, I think especially obviously, you know, it's kind of a, you know, we're talking about what, what we need to do about broadband. At the same time, Metronet has, has approached us and is looking at doing stuff in the city. And so some people might be like, well, why do we, you know, still need to study it? But to me, I, I think, I, I think hiring a sort of a consultant or somebody who's got some expertise in this issue, and both firms are, are working inside the budget that we've got, I think will really help us to, to identify, you know, what really are the strengths and weaknesses of our current broadband exposure in the city. I think, I think if you would ask the mayor and the council members and the city staff, you know, you'd probably identify 10 different opinions on what are the current status of broadband is in the city. And so I think, you know, we'll be able to identify through this process a firm that can really help us, first of all, figure out what exactly this current system looks like in the city. And then also identify, you know, a solution if we need, if we want to do a solution, if we need to do a solution in Johnson, something that will fit kind of what our community looks like. Definitely, I think one thing I heard this morning was, you know, that not a one size fits all. You know, and definitely that both the, the two firms, I think, that we're kind of getting close to narrowing it down to, or, you know, even however we figure it out, know that each city is different and, and, and each solution is different. And so, and it, you know, so anyway, I, I, I came away from that feeling really positive about the process. And I think we'll end up bringing somebody on board to help us, you know, and help support city staff and on these important issues of making sure that we all have enough broadband so that we can, you know, help our citizens function to the highest level that they need to. So just wanted to pass that on.
Thank you. Councilman Evans.
I, I think Tom just answered my, my question because I'm sitting here going, if we just got Metronet, why do we need broadband? But now I understand. And there was also a question about this little development next to me that didn't have internet when they moved in. And we stress that, that, that should be something we need to look at. And for what it's worth, for the last three weeks, I think, Century Link has been digging and plugging stuff in and hooking it all up. And it worked for one day because they lost all their addresses on the backend. So, so all these people are back to square one, which is kind of funny. And they're all, they've all taken a sense of humor to it, so. And then kudos on all the help with the storm damage like everybody else. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I just interrupt this real, real quick? To answer, I guess, Councilman Evans' question about when I, tonight, when I asked Metronet about identifying the neighborhood specifically that are deserts, I was specifically thinking about that neighborhood right next to us. I just want to make sure that's, that's what I, that's, that, that's what I'm trying to figure out and trying to put that as a priority. So that's what I was, that's, that's to me, I think, is, is, is something. So anyway, sorry for interrupting, but just wanted to kind of circle back on that, so.
Not a problem. Let me just conclude with three, three good news items. Since last week, we had, we had a lot of bad news in, in our community, but there was good news that to be had. The schools put on their orientation for their new teachers and, and they always asked me to come and do the welcome on behalf of the city. And it was amazing, you know, we had probably 40 very young eager faces on the screen that I was talking to, but looks like we were able to recruit another talented crop of young, young teachers coming into our community and they're very anxious to get started. So that's always a fun thing to do. Also, the Iowa Fire Service Training Bureau moved to Camp Dodge last week. They have existed in the state for about 100 years. They were originally located up at Iowa State University when it had some other name at the time and have lived there for all of these decades. But just last week, they moved to the old fire station at Camp Dodge. It's been recently renovated and they'll be able to use the training grounds up there. And just so happens, the bureau chief is a resident of Johnston and also a member of our fire department. So it was very exciting for John. Chief, help me with John's last name. Are you still on, Chief?
Yes, sorry, Mayor. John Kramer.
Kramer, yes. Very exciting day for John Kramer, very exciting day for us and, and Camp Dodge. Chief Clark was also there to speak on behalf of the city. So it was a really neat event. We had firefighters from all across the state. There were probably 200 people there to help celebrate the occasion for us. So if you have an opportunity to go up to Camp Dodge and, and do a tour of the training, training facility up there, I, I know they'd love to, to show you around. And then of course, the kids triathlon, the Ripper River Triathlon that has been held in, in Johnston now for the last six years. It, it, it happened this last weekend. It was amazing. All of these kids ages five to, I think, 18, participating in the three sports against each other. And kudos to John Schmitz and his entire team and everyone who was involved to make sure that the, the park was cleaned up and ready for their arrival. And, and as far as I know, I, I was up there for a while. I didn't stay for the entire event, but it looked like things were proceeding just, just fabulously. Everybody was wearing their mask, except for the kids when they were in the swimming, or in Tara Lake. But it was, it was a great day and it was great to be able to feel that something was almost normal again. Not quite, a lot of social distancing, a lot of face masks. But the kids were out there having a great time and lots of family and, and friends supporting them along the way. And, and they couldn't be more, everyone, the organizers of the events as well as the families who participate in the event couldn't be more appreciative of the fact that they have a facility like Tara Park to be able to hold the culmination of their activities. And, and this year, the culmination of their activities was the only event that they had. So they were particularly excited to be at Tara, Tara Park this weekend. So anyway, there was, there was some good things that happened last week and, in, in the midst of everything else that was going on. So just wanted to share all of that with you. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, then we are adjourned. If not, then we are adjourned. Thanks, all.
Good night, guys.
Good night.